I'm calling, meeting is ordered, Young County. Commissioners Court Meeting, it's a regular meeting Monday, February 24th, 2013. 9:30 AM. If it's convenient for the state. Father of heaven, thank you for this day and many blessings you bring to us. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to live in this great country, in this great state, and in this great county. We ask your blessings upon those leaders, and that they look to your counsel and all the citizens that have to make. We ask your blessings upon this meeting as we direct the business of our constituency. We ask your blessings upon those members of our countrymen who stand in harm's way to protect the rights and privileges that we've come to love so dearly. We ask these things in your precious name, Christ, amen.
Good morning. Do you have a prayer?
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Do you want to make note that this meeting has been both in manner and time of our law, and that all members of the court present? Is there any announcements that need to be made? Have any of this reported on our document, on our agenda, does anybody know of any announcements? If not, if it pleases, the court will move now to out of number 18. We consider the free finance options, vehicles and equipment. You have first act of the place, you still call. Out of number 17, I think you've been dealt with already. Number 17. I don't like that you're going to end this one. That was just outside my court. So out of number 18, call.
Good morning.
Morning. You may. You have the first door.
That's correct.
That was up there. Frequent, so let's speak to us. Court have any questions?
Right. Really, what I was presenting was pretty straightforward. As you can see, your overall savings at the lower rate. Just to kind of point out a couple of things. There are no charges or any fees to be had, but the judge has not to be in change of paper. They do have that option, I know I spoke to a couple of commissioners. Well, we can watch you have that option to keep that payment stream the same, which, you know, if you're elevating a guaranteed buyback, not only was it worth $1,000. If you keep that payment stream the same, you're just buying down your equity into the bottom dollar. Or you can opt to keep your guaranteed buyback the same and take the lower end of the payment. So I have that as a different option. But like I said, just as a comparison, I did bring a couple of things I wanted to talk about. In regard to my competitors did for February 10th. On the 10th, I was obviously not able to be here. I was in several other commission boards, and I ran into this similar situation that he presented to y'all on the 10th. And really, he didn't get a head wrap around it until I watched a YouTube video. And after watching the YouTube video, I mean, it makes sense to me. Because what he was saying was he was doing a refund, two and a half. Payment stream was the same, and it was affecting the ending balance. So my math didn't match his math. And I was trying to wrap my brain around it. And 2.5%, my hillside over there, which, you know, I ran into that on the 10th in other courts as well. So I did an example. And this one's on the 2012 motor grader that he has at 48, 640. His lease number, annual payment is 16.5. Obviously, I did a lower rate than 2.5%, so my savings were more than what he presented. I just want to make a point here that at 2.5% with American National, your ending balance would be 139.710. If we had been truly doing a match rate at 2.5%, my ending balance would have been So I'm not real sure what he was doing there. I understand he said he was affected at the end. But that's not what I'm presenting. He was bringing full savings on the refund, when he started the loan.
So you're changing the balance of the payment, the year of the payment?
I can if you choose that way, seriously.
Well, I was thinking that he was modifying his design. I don't have a lot of material to be.
I did the same thing. I did the exact same thing in my example.
You took off the refund?
I just, I let the payment stream the same.
Let the payment stream the same, so.
You let the 2.5%, making a balance.
So you're creating the end, such a payment or present. So if you have the payment, the year of the.
Yeah, exactly the same. Yeah.
So.
It had 139.710 balance.
So.
And I had the 2.5, we had a equipment sale, 396. And then the 2.4, you had your balance of 136, 12611.
On your initial, on your initial offer, on the free finance, did it 3.5, 2.5?
No, sir, when we did the backhoe, it was at the 2.5% when we did the backhoe. I asked at that time if the court would entertain the refinance option. I didn't present a refinance at that time. I just said at the new lower rate. So I fully intend to present it to the court in the lower rate, which would include this current backup. You know, like I said, it's competition, so we're out laying the same ground, you know. But that was something I ran into in three places, four places actually, where it wasn't an overall savings of 2.5% that's only affected at the end. And I had a judge that actually caught it. He said, Stuart, how is it that your savings is greater than his? He has the, he has the law, how are your savings falling? And I was just left scratching my head, I didn't understand. So when I caught it, that, you know, he was doing a factor at the end, you know, he's not giving it the 2.5 overall over the total of the last one, or a one percent. I'm not sure if he can explain that. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, when we were here before, like you said, on the 10th, we originally were doing a match rate. And I'm not here trying to match anybody. He's here to match a rate, so we can talk him into the fact you don't have to do any paperwork, which I don't do paperwork anyway, it's just on the judge. My overall savings to the county is $38,135. His overall savings was $21,423.
$38,135.
That's what I'm getting. But I do appreciate y'all giving the opportunity to come out here, to address this, to represent my proposal. Any questions? Then we're happy to address them.
Stuart, those balances that are left at the end of the current notes that we have?
Yes, sir.
Will they be refinanced at this 225, or will it be refinanced at a rate that will be negotiated at that time?
These balances that y'all currently have?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, as you stated in the video for February 10th, this was good through the day. So why update it per diem, that will handle one, two of these amounts that were presented?
But when we get through the term, get that guaranteed payback, or guaranteed buyback?
Yeah, we know, equity situation, we worry that equipment.
I understand. We still, we still have the payment to make.
Yes, sir.
Will the balance of that loan be renegotiated at that time when we get into that guaranteed buyback?
In five years, three years, whatever, it'll be, yeah, if you decide you want to refinance that equipment.
Should be cheap if we refinance right now, the entire balance?
Absolutely.
Those interest rates may move up. Some of those, what's the, some of those are, three years?
Yeah, some are three.
What's the shortest term we have left?
It's one.
It's one year. So being in an equity position, it'd be best, once again, that would change the payment upwards.
Yeah. But if we do the same.
Accelerate our equity.
Leave the payment the same, would be the most smart way to do. Yeah, if you let your payment the same, I mean, you're built. And if you're taking that $38,000 overall savings. Put it right back in the pie. Yeah, put it back in the pie, so that maybe you sell, trade, whatever, you've got a little time.
So we're just paying more on the principal side of the loan, same thing?
Same thing. Some of this that's presented in that number, that 1.5 million, you know, may actually trade. I don't know if it's trading or.
Yeah, we hope it's trading by, after three years.
So even with that being said, if we pull those out of this refinance package, and they trade and get new equipment, it would still be at 2.25.
Trading here three years, not necessarily, that's a precinct policy, right?
Yeah.
Not a county policy. Yeah, because I'm not sure that's.
Yeah.
You look at the bio.
I mean, if you look at the numbers, how they trade, I mean, they trade for like $20,000, $25,000.
You say?
It's crazy.
Yeah, we're making them off, so get used to it.
That's a court action that we've regarded as always as sort of optional.
Yeah.
If they would want us, they're ready to go with it.
I just want to make sure we wasn't the entire court, that we was precinct three.
The only thing about it is, is that after five years, the buyback is not there. It's gone.
I understand.
And it's where we get. But the coolest thing is, is on these, on these motor grader, that's the cheapest thing to count, you know, of those. If you do the math on it, it don't cost you $1,000 a month, the whole one, and that's not putting your brand new tires on unless your brother won't have it.
And my problem is, there was eaten up 80% of my equipment, but to make this payment.
Well, you do, you do have that O6 built in there that's taken up, you know, about $19,000 of that budget.
I understand. I've got to find a way to alleviate myself so I can add additional equipment to the precinct that we need.
Yeah, that O6 is probably working more than you have on it. You'd probably be better off just making that, selling that equipment type of money and building some.
We're exploring it.
That was my suggestion in the beginning, but you cut me off.
Well, it was obvious to me as I came on that that was a solution.
You're the princess.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? I'm having my, it's true, like you want, sir. I think you have pretty much. I call you with first national person.
You might.
This is all. I would like to find out, please, if you can.
Do we ever have to say names?
Here's a, a buyback proposal. For this point, for me, I'd like to start off by saying I appreciate the opportunity that we buy these machines for you. The question that Stuart brought up about the balances being different, that's pretty easy to explain, and the fact that when you do a three-year deal or a five-year deal, at the beginning, the ending of the last payment pretty much signed off on where you worked that balance. But as you know, since it's a three-year deal or a five-year deal, if you start a deal in February, which first payment ends until May or June, there's a couple of months gap. So if you start the particular at, in February, then it goes into 36 months, or five years, or 48 months, whatever it is, you've got to complete, or put into the contract, the full term, even though the payment stream might be varying when you start from the end. So that, that's the difference in what you'll see. When I did these refi balances, I looked at the term being full. In fact, if you do want to write it to the end, yeah, there will be some more interest for a period during that time. But if you want to cut it off at any point in time, the line gets drawn, and that's what we pay off the end. So, you know, you're going, more likely to be getting out of these deals before the end of the term anyway. So while it's for an illustration or a comparison purpose, the line gets drawn, we get out of the lease. So it's, you know, I've got the illustrations here, if you want to review them, you'll see that the math is correct.
So the interest meters start trying to let you sign the contract?
Yeah. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
When you sign the contract, that's what.
And you start paying it down, or you make, start making payments?
Yeah.
And you don't start paying it down until you start making payments?
That's correct. And that's, that sort of ties in with all the paperwork that's involved. 80, 38, 18 with IRS, that's what you got to do, is whenever that deal gets funded, that's when the meter starts. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. So if you look at the collections, based on the current balances at 224, there's a $27,982 savings on the equipment, and a $37,000 savings on vehicles, you know, I understand 31,000.
If you don't have the backhoe that we just did last.
You know, I'll include that, I'll be glad to include that, but I didn't have those numbers to include in this calculation.
You said on the vehicles, what's that amount?
31,000?
No, 310. 3,000, 10,000 dollars, just on vehicles. If you add these two numbers together.
I got you. I got you. I was wondering how far.
But again, we appreciate your business, we want to keep your business, and turn it going forward, so that's why we're, as aggressive as we are on the rate, we're waiving all charges as well, for the documentation fees. Each of these are in place to get the deal done, have you do an tandem, list all of these numbers, O rate, D rate, sign it, and it's in play.
Yes, sir.
So you're, yeah, I'm advocating a little bit less your rate, but the savings is off your strike.
It's way better than what 2.5 was.
Yes, sir.
Savings around $31,500, almost $30,000.
I believe the first act was wrong, says that it's a big act, like the savings in the county being 38.15.
Now, if this math is correct, I can guess that, based on the payment stream being the same, we've got implications here.
This one, or the last, they got in place, which is backhoe. This one doesn't.
That's correct.
I don't know how much difference that's going to make there.
I'm just, if.
For the total, what's, after the, what about?
70?
But, you know, I'll be glad to sit down with Cheryl, or whoever, and go for the gentleman.
Pretty nice. So you can't mistake some of this, because you're starting values, and then tell the factory, you know, your total savings here, but we just, we're, we're just adding last figures, took one, stood at 2.25, you know, it's recognized by the chief of rate.
Yeah, but even though the range is cheaper, you look at two vehicles, there's even the difference in that also.
Starting values.
Yeah, just disregard the difference between the motor grader and the backhoe. You just, $77,000, there's a difference in the savings. Again, and if I was, started out with, you know, look at where the deal started, it started in March of, uh, 2012, so that means that's when it started. Last payment is due, it's 15, 2015. But in reality, the deal is a 36-month deal, so it'll end in March of 2016. So there's another period of time there, if y'all do stretch it to the end, that interest will increase. So if you pay it off on, on the last payment in December, it's, it's only $41,000, it's nonsense, if you don't stretch it to the end of the target in December, 1870. So, again, that adds up.
Basically, the numbers are going to work their way out. I mean, numbers are numbers, and they, they come out the way they come out. And if the financing contracts are exactly the same, I mean, obviously, 2.20 is going to come up with some sort of difference. I don't know what kind of difference. I think the question here is, what do we want to finance, who do we want to finance it with? Doesn't matter if we're off $100 here, or 20 cents there. I mean, obviously, both these parties are wanting our business, and we're responsible for financing this equipment for the, for the county. Now, here's the problem, that we've got a relationship with American National, we've had a long time, and know what to expect, and how it works, and we got a new player that's come along, and is, is going to make competition even more of a sharper age than it was before. So I think we need to take a look and assess where we are and what we want, what we want the county to, to have. Probably need to include the auditor, treasurer, in some of these negotiations, and see what it is we got, because, you know, simply buying one for a lower rate is not necessarily the right decision.
I, I don't know why we just can't do this, almost like we do our ads. I'm buying a piece of equipment, I go, Mr. Kubo, I'll go with him. You know what I'm saying?
Right, well, obviously, they want the whole package, and these kind of rates, you know, they would not care for the package. So, and that's, that's something to think about, certainly is.
I make the rest of my, I've been doing that, it's killing me.
I, I for one appreciate both parties showing up and presenting these numbers, and as I peruse these numbers, I'm going to have other questions, and so I'm not prepared to make any kind of decision for a thing. So, but that's me.
Any questions? I think I can say about First National, I'm not saying it about you, we have dealt with Stuart forever too. And he knows our business here, and that can help. And I'm not like, it's nothing against you at all, because American National has been good to us.
One of those, but Stuart has to. Individuals and institutions make the whole package.
That was his job.
Definitely.
Okay, there's $45,500 differences I see in here. Total refinancing, balance.
Well, again, you know, this is the new court, I just doing the balances off as of today, because, you know, the 10th was the 10th, and 24th is the 24th, right where I have mine. And if that's something you want to consider, on American National's legal side, to go back in now, use those bounces going forward, then that's fine, I'm sure of that, but, you know, it's very good. Is that the beginning balance, refund balance, or are you talking about the savings between, or?
Well, I'll talk about the refinance balance, but it would like, on equipment, to be in 363, 759, on your presentation, and then 102, 49.
Judge, if Stuart has something he'd like to allow on that particular question.
Yes, that's what I'm showing you.
Okay, and that doesn't include the backhoe.
That's correct.
And so I had the backhoe with 7, 4, 3, 7, 1, is that what refinancing's going now?
Yeah, I think that was the, yeah, you got it, yeah.
So if I figured out that, that's a balance of, you did figure that, you figured out the, the enforcement, that back. Obviously, they had the backhoe included in theirs. At, uh, two point two five. Two point two five, that balance is. Being five three fifty-nine.
So the balance, the backhoe deal is how much?
Seventy-four. Yeah, we'll have to do a little bit. Seventy-four three fifty-one, seventy-four three fifty-one percent, pretty, pretty full. On this one, it's, uh... Twenty-five.
Yeah.
A little bit.
How tall is that one, sir? The backhoe, you're going to call it six-six, is that what you're gonna say?
Four seven one, like, uh, my answer. Uh, you have the maximum, uh, savings, the maximum, six, one, four, six, six. And then, if you want to do the backhoe with your... I mean, if you add that in there, I don't know if we'll do that enough, or like this thing. Yeah. First National leases, we're not even, not even putting that in yet.
The truth of this matter is, one of these confusing numbers, is that the interest rate, the tender balances, is what's gonna save us money, very bottom line. You know, the numbers are the numbers.
What I'm gonna say.
You know? As long as we're refinancing the proper balance owed and the proper interest rate over the proper term and the proper contract, we're gonna save what we save. You know? So we sat here figuring all the eight, we come up with a sudden rate different number. Let's read the teacher's grade papers.
And that backhoe will be ready.
I should do.
I would appreciate that, I would probably go to the backhoe a lot. It's irrelevant to the balance. Or the single balance that we have on current financing.
It took such a great exception on that, I think it's probably just to stay right over there. Yours.
Amen. Any other questions?
I have a question about this thing, you know, you've been here with just a little bit older rate. We've got a known relationship with American National, I think it'll continue, even though the spirit has left. I'd like to stay over there.
I have a decision on Mike, any hope of Mike?
I know, Judge, I did ask him, like, Steve.
On Mike before, put the right.
I would like to, I'd like to.
He's, he's not talking.
Maybe like a little bit. We may kind of hustle, but we've got a bad time, I think.
Okay, one person? I presented on February tenth, the two point two five percentage rate, Mr. Kube presented the two point five. Here we are on February twenty-fourth, he's presenting two point two. I would make the request that you give me the opportunity to come back with a lower interest rate. I mean, if he's gonna be able to come in. I thought, I thought we already done this. So if he has the ability to come in today, and I'm presenting my two point two five from February tenth. I would like that opportunity to offer the lower rate.
Because when we did have our last meeting, he was the lowest. Now, we would've made the decision.
What it was, we're talking about lowest.
He wasn't here, he presented that on the white paper. If he would have had a chance to do some things, I have to... My would have brought back the torch, we did.
This way, since what we did was all day.
Right, yeah. I'm just saying, hey, I've been here over the past, uh, either maybe since the two point two five.
Now you've been.
And now he's coming down because he knew I was in the house. So, I mean, it's a, it's a season. So we're gonna continue working through it, I appreciate if you give me that opportunity.
I'm gonna get a right, a lower rate. And I think it's, and it's asinine when we talk about, well, we've been with them before, duh, duh, duh. Well, you know what, there's new things out there, guys, that we gotta think about. Kind of like Rockdale, when we did it, it's because we were somebody forever, you know, you're stable forever. You can come out and...
You want something better?
More money for your dog.
No, I'm not.
You are.
No, in reality, I'm not.
But that's another issue anyway. That's a different, that's a whole different vehicle.
Right.
And I don't think we have, our effects, we have.
I haven't noticed that we've tackled this further consideration.
If you just keep taking this, you're just kicking the can down the road and saying, well, we're getting anything done.
I'll second that. So we've got hope for second. Thank you, Mr. Kube. I had a second, I'll listen. Good. On third, I oppose. Guys, I've got the first deal with it, I've laid, that's three par, two pros. Roger myself, very deal with it, so we will table that. majority. Are you ready to give my?
I am ready.
Okay, we'll move now, so about ten minutes after ten, we'll move back to, uh... Island number. thirteen thirteen, open bids for trucks, personally, state of the business.
Obviously, gents, records and which are called false, right? And, uh, they're here to ask for what's happening here. They'll tell them all, because they need to examine it, and they're here to explain anything. First, I'm hoping it's records.
What is that, that side group?
Well.
That's a group, there's the automated transmission. One of, uh...
Two one three. So this is just that one.
All of them, billions. Can you let us just the truck get it, Commissioner Roger?
Thirteen speeds, one-on-one, five away.
This one, who? I do.
I got you.
Thirteen speeds, four bells, one oh nine, eight seventy.
In front?
Still, we're still open records.
Okay.
So they're covering all the licenses.
I understand. I'm gonna try it also.
And it's one thirteen, eight seventy-seven. So this one's, this one's one four bells, and this is...
So, these are twenty thirteen states, the good thing, the bad thing. You did.
Just random.
Yeah. Trade them over three years.
Is the one oh, thirteen speed is the one oh two, seven seventeen, and I guess this is the little whistle, automatic transmission. One oh eight, eight oh two. And offering trade-in price on the ninety-one, automatic four thousand. Offering trade-in price on the two thousand, automatic nine thousand. And they will purchase the two oh trucks, the ninety-four at three thousand, and purchase the two thousand outright at seven thousand.
Okay, they got, they got the... Or two, manual transmission.
Manual, one oh two, seven one seven. Thirteen speed, thirteen speed, automatic at one oh eight, eight oh two. Offering trade-ins of four thousand, ninety-four, and then offering trade-in two thousand, twenty thousand. Our outright purchase, the two oh trucks, the ninety-four, three, and the two thousand, automatic seventy thousand.
Well, those outright purchases, we qualify as bids for those trucks in our next bid opening. So, for those outright purchases they're offering there, qualify as bids against bidding of the older equipment that you've done.
If someone else turned in a bid to buy, and someone else turned in a bid to buy, so these are, these are the, there's I have.
And these are max.
Frank on right, right line.
You both need to stand on it here, if you have any questions.
Right, this is one max?
Yeah.
Was there anything I missed, say, when I...
Uh, yeah.
Okay, good.
If I can.
Sure. I am not a trucker.
You're riding in a weather.
I did.
Um...
I'll play the nine, please. Play the nine, please. Josh Phillips. Josh Phillips. There's still a short.
It's very obvious, Eddie.
Yeah, I look kinda like a famous. But make the job, I don't know, I have to pull up the name capital.
This right here, and this is all open as the trade-in numbers for the trucks.
Okay, I understand, because I did not see each one.
Right. And this is the price.
Price, okay.
Price, this number up here.
Okay.
So, okay.
This can be cheaper, too.
Yeah.
And it is, um, and this is based on trade-in.
Okay, so this will be...
Right. And they're going with each one of these. And included specs with each one, because these are obviously for, if one of these spec trucks. So two of them are to maximize return on a, on the backside, and two of them go more along the lines of the general specs that would give them the best execution.
Okay, can you say, keep?
Okay, so let me reread that. On the twenty fifteen thirteen speed, the total quote was one oh nine, eight seventy, and offering a trade-in of the ninety-four, and it's trade-in only, about twenty-five hundred dollars, and a trade-in on the two thousand, about five thousand dollars.
Okay, that's a little bit effective. Yes, sir.
Same for the line?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it's the same on everyone.
Well, let me rewrite, reread the, uh, because I may have given you this top quote, which it really should be this bottom. Uh, on the thirteen speed, twenty fifteen, uh, one oh one, five fifty-nine. Yeah, fifty dollars.
Yes. But I will make sure that... I'm lost.
One oh one, five fifty-nine, fifty dollars.
Want to switch one?
That's on the twenty fifteen thirteen speed, the one without, not all the...
There you go.
That's somewhere, somewhere out of that footage. Okay, and then on the twenty fifteen, um, what do you call it, M?
M drop.
M drop, okay. It's total quote price is one oh five, two sixty-three, on the one without all the bells and whistles. And on the one with all the bells and whistles, it's one thirteen, nine twenty-seven.
That is... And that's not including the price.
No, there's not, so...
Price value, twenty-five hundred, back up, we'll, we'll come up with that.
Like I said, everything's different.
We good? And add those ways for just a minute.
Alright, thank you.
Representative from Fred's.
Who's that guy?
Eric Horsay.
Eric.
Horsay.
Horsay.
Yes, sir. O-H-A-S-A-K. Now, what does that mean? Check.
Thank you, sir.
I worship. I'm a big saint, I worship.
You're a worshipper, like a carter.
You don't like the carter. I'm like, you call that a human worship. I wanted to clarify that my, my truck does have just a general set of specs. I have one with the thirteen speed, altar, deep altar shift, and thirteen speed, main, uh, trade difference, and shipper. That, that I, I keep it in front of me. My truck is generalized set, but all of the Caplin does have, blue wheels on both specs. Josh and Mary can tell the mind, does anyone have wheels? Do possible. So what do you say? The E can do is automatic, but the more expensive, more expensive one, uh, is the E altar shift. That'd be easier to do, or basically, uh, this is the, uh, this is... How long has that E been out? Uh, the altar shift, yes, seventy, seventy. Actually, I have some old one now, so I'm not sure. And it's just, we have custom, this one's, uh, it's got a three-horse, three-horse, and so it's very, very scared of, actually, with the orange, red, and four.
It's a type of...
I didn't get no shift and no more. And just because of the truck driver, you get...
Truck driver today is a little bit...
Yeah, it's terrible, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, what engines are these? How many horsepower?
Mine is the Detroit, the E W fifteen. That is, uh, the latest race, too. The E W fifteen is the only engine built from the ground up, too specific to the E W eighteen, yeah. Horsepower, five hundred five, I said, sixteen fifty-four pounds. And also, quote, I did, uh, I posted it, uh, the, 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 the extended one, you know, the E W four, to cover your main engine, and your after-trading device, on the five-year, five hundred thousand. If you have any questions, please, if you feel prepared.
The Max got Allison in there?
What's that again?
Mac, the Allison, the Mac.
No, it's got the, uh, don't come up there. It's got the Mac M drop, which is a proprietary transmission for Mac trucks, uh, twelve-speed. Similar to an ultra-shift, uh, but a proprietary, uh, unit from Mac, uh, that has what they call a Mac accelerator, which is a kick-down gear. Uh, and then the brake gripper, which basically allows you, if you're on an incline, you let off the brake, the transmission actually helps. The transmission actually holds the brake for three seconds. Transfer to pedal, so you're not having to two pedal on an incline. Um.
Yes.
It's, it's hard to see.
Hill starters, brake gripper. They're all about the same.
But. Punch is exactly what it says. Really soft brake, give you time to.
A little longer. Keep going with that.
Where I saw. You got so many of those. You gotta be careful when you're on these guys, you gonna push drive under.
Shot will get bad.
If you have still be.
Eight dollar. Different names.
I'll hear somebody.
Here's got the Mac brarians.
Mac brarians. Reduction. Here's a. Outright suspension. You're gonna be hard pressed to get anything other than air ride nowadays. I mean, you can still get spring, but. It's human. Human part between, does anybody, does anybody ever want it? You'd be surprised, I've got some, some guys that.
That are, that's what I was gonna say, just old, old guys don't wanna change.
Guys that don't wanna change.
Old school.
Oh, God.
Some say it's still old, forty seven.
Also used to drive on. Flat, I was like, it had two years, you haven't seen it yet, that's a good experience.
I drove when the sewage started coming. And it was a. He's a lot of truck, requires three hands.
They're, they're different. Yeah. Mac, do the truck have a Maxi line?
Uh, back end, yeah, five speed. Back end. You know, the Mac has their own transmissions now, other than the only one that, you know, in thirteen. You know, I'm great. Mac pretty much went to building all around itself, so. And this was. Mac engine. Mac engine, five oh five horsepower, seventeen sixty foot pedals.
So, even with a manual truck, y'all have not seen any trouble with automatic transmission.
With, well, there's a difference between what we're specking and an automatic. An automated manual is what these are. An automatic way is like an Allison, Allison's the only.
It can retrieve.
Like in your car.
It's automatic. It's a ma, it's a manual box, just electronic control.
Right. So, when you're listening to it, it sounds like there's a shifter and it wraps up like a manual.
Still.
And you know, you've got it.
R D option.
Either hard. Yeah. On the manual option, but pretty much you just hit.
I was gonna check that.
You just. But even with, like I was saying, the manual model, you don't ever see any of them.
Uh. Now, I mean, I'm. Never's and ever's are hard questions to answer.
It's mainly, it's, it's a standard transmission with automated box. Right, what it is.
What they call, what general terms, X Y shifter. Control, you know, biting the engine, the transmission through electronics. X Y shifter controls it, controls the clutch and the operation of it.
So, I, I could actually. Hit that our stop box. It is. Cause I do that a lot. I tell a few.
Get the Allison. Get the smart card, potter speaking.
Now, I know that the M drive, uh, has what they call smart shifting, so it'll skip shift as needed. You might start out in, if you're bob telling, you about to start out in fourth gear. And then it skips shifts and it's up to twelfth gear.
It, it's all responsible, it's all, it's just locally.
Right.
Depends on the training and the way.
So, that translates into more efficiency and fuel economy, too. That's all right, sir.
That translates into fuel.
That's exactly what that says. Somebody's making those calculations.
They would have met the, the Detroit, obviously, if they were.
It depends on the application.
Depends on the salesman, too.
He's gonna, he's gonna say, yeah, I know, so I'm gonna say, let him know, I'm gonna give you any of the numbers.
The C, the old C sixty Detroit is coming to a very good.
Yes.
You know, and if you had some, then you could sell, you could take a part of money on both.
I think you'd get free E D A share.
Yes. It's gonna play experiences.
Probably going, here's the first of this, but I'm making a decision today. I think we're gonna reject the trade in value, the trade ins. I don't think that's enough money.
They're right here, it's got a bushet.
Man, this record is not a really good place to negotiate. You're stirring. What about that Mac in Detroit again?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's go start that.
Can we just let him look at the stuff? Go on then. Just go on to the. Just bring it along. Get on, I'm like.
That's a lot to digest right there, Rogers.
We started doing this about a month ago, probably, so.
But you didn't have numbers, did you?
Yeah, we had a ballpark figures and these are, those are the ones that started out. And I left one of the Macs that they had on the yard. Mac truck, you know, front of the back. Always value a little better than I've dealt on. Than another brand, so to speak. And, um, let me just go up there and I'm sure that all of you up to sign and get our numbers. I'm sure it was gonna happen.
Okay.
So, I'll type it out until, I'll light it for me.
Okay, good.
Not most of them, this is Roger. I would, I might have put it.
How's that?
Second. All fired. Okay. I have. Just about meeting later.
Can we take a little right if we can move it?
Let's wait a minute, help them.
I had those bids from Eric DeBry, he couldn't say, but from the sheriff's bones out there.
They couldn't, okay. Listen, he not gonna be here.
No.
Okay, let's wait on that.
Okay.
I've got ten thirty, we've got, um, another bid opening. All. Demolition of the old British L E C building. How many bids do you have?
I have six bids, we had several, um, demolition companies call, some did not.
I had some calling in on California.
Really?
They want out of California?
Someone can.
You guys can subscribe, we can add later.
Are we ready?
Uh, I'm like, we on.
Do that one time?
Yeah, we on.
Uh, the first one is from Gibson Trucking, D I B S O N. There's a lot of folks who've taken a look at it, I'm not sure all of them.
Can I ask you what the prompt is whenever you say that?
Yes, this one is from Rand Texas. Um. Maybe he doesn't, he said, yeah. Gibson Trucking will provide bond and insurance of, of bid if awarded, awarded a copy of total tons of metal removed and sold off salvage. All salvaged metals will be sold to Rand Iron and Salvage. Gibson Trucking will keep all monies from all salvage metals to offset the end of cost. All, all debris will disposed at nine minutes' pace. And he is submitting all proceeds from all two turning point at fifty dollars per load, all off of all brick concrete. I'm looking, looking for trucking and destruction company. I have experienced equipment, it isn't them, I'm not having that. Price of thirty six thousand one hundred. Do you know if you have this or not? Shouldn't slip over it. This is Diamond Ale Enterprises demolition.
Diamond Ale?
Diamond Ale, and they're out in Texas.
I didn't either.
Well, I think this is the gentleman that he. He moved here with a demo all over. And I'm not gonna take him on all the next composition. He proposes demolish the, the commercial building and dispose of all said associated debris from his purposes for the sum of eighty nine thousand, seven ninety eight twenty. Seven eight.
Have one to there.
That's one of eighty nine thousand, seven ninety eight and twenty cents. Uh, the price includes demolition removal of the personal building, removal of concrete slab, removal of all metal and containers. They reserve the right. Price to any and all material with salvage value to offset operating expenses.
Is he bonded?
Um, all of them, no, they're gonna have to get, be able to get the bond if, if awarded the contract.
What about the asbestos?
We'll talk about that.
Okay.
It's a whole new.
It's good.
You can go see, I don't see any other.
It's, uh.
It's not good.
Not much credit for selling.
It's not great, but it's good.
Yeah.
Now, this is Redco R A D C O Industrial out of McGregor, Texas.
What's her, what's the name?
Uh, Redco, R A D C O. Uh, he sent a copy of this liability insurance. This bid is to demo the old L E C building in Red Texas disposal debris and notified permission for it to be disposed. Provide a copy of how many tons of steel was removed from the building once building is demolished and removed, we cite sold within the law. Bid does include six foot tall temporary fencing around the side, does control removal of. Three on coolant from AC units, conservatory. Bid price thirty nine thousand. And it says they'll provide bond for the demolition, but three percent of bid is jobless worth. Bonding company is far above insurance. You got it? The next is, uh, Manfred's demolition. Somewhere. So, you wanna go in there? Uh, the yard, whether. Then he proposed the first automatic equipment, labor to accomplish the demolition of the mail. Take the posse, the company, the utilities on salvage, other than Chevy. I'm seeing here, there's different prices. Uh, bid, um, twenty eight thousand seven hundred. I'll read over, see if you say anything else, we need to know.
Wow.
This bid is from Garrett Demolition, they're out of Burgess in Texas.
Two teams or one?
Two teams, two bars.
Bars?
Yes, sir. Uh. They were punished, turned off materials, never put them on the job, they're talking for all such local state, federal regulations, I mean, for calling the sun. And they do say in seven days, seven working hours, that is in weather for me. Demo price, the price of thirty nine thousand five hundred dollars. See if they can. Last is for our specs. The last one is from Iron Environmental in East Texas.
Iron in what?
Iron environmental and demolition.
Thank you.
Eastern Texas. Because I told all of these captains, we did not have the asbestos for the after time, they bid on us. Add on this, uh, I see building demolition and disposal, and I guess, like I said, they have a pricing schedule. Have it broken down. Temporary fence, four thousand one twenty five, traffic control, seven hundred seventy, erosion control, eight hundred twenty. Lighting, violence removal and disposal, one thousand and eighty. And they had building demolition and disposal, forty four thousand seven hundred. Uh, bonding, three percent of total contract value is one thousand five seventy. And site restoration, which is optional, at nineteen thousand seven seventy. So, I suppose the building demolition disposal is forty four thousand seven hundred, right? I see that on screen.
One thought.
Yeah, so I guess if we took off, we took all those things and. I guess that's what we took everything on there, maybe?
Site restoration, bonds, they need to total all that together.
About fifty thousand three hundred dollars.
Fifty two, three.
Uh, big old egg, you do the site restoration.
Yeah, cause I don't.
Twenty thousand dollars.
The site restoration was nineteen thousand seven.
Twenty thousand, I think that was forty eight, forty nine, fifty. Fifty two, something. Here we are, back to the man. I need to take my shoes off. There you go.
That's the one that I said, actually, I have a schedule, it's gonna take seven days. If, did you see?
The bid said seven days.
No, I said that, that did much, you know, seven days.
Why do you have any shooting now? We said the bid to our specs, so it's assumed seven days. And when we write, they. I agree when we all put seven days in.
We have it done in a weekend.
What did our specs say about site restoration? Say it would be left clean and left.
Yeah, all the debris removed and sold prepared level.
Notice some of it, it's compaction, and I don't know what this nineteen thousand dollars of site restoration is.
It's got trees and. Aspen.
Oh, they're really finishing it up? Oh, they're really finishing it up?
Yeah.
It's quite simple.
Twenty thousand dollars.
They leave it clean and left.
I'll, I'll put a tree for fifty bucks.
And then bring your new backhoe up.
And I'm bringing home.
Yeah, your new backhoe.
Is the last bid the only one that included asbestos?
None of them.
None of them included asbestos. And we're saying any of it, no abating was included in any of it.
We talked about that a little bit. At the, uh, responsibility as it was to check that subject certified inspector that's approved by the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality. Which we had that, we had that, the same people that did the inspection in our basements, all of them. Like plus the best order for this one.
This, uh, the most is we had a pass this fifteen-sixth. That is, is the maximum I haven't, I don't have possibly yet.
Whether or not, depending on how many samples they took?
Yes. But I noticed the last time when we said the maximum that they could have charged for the boiler room is three thousand two hundred, they charged one of these sixteen hundred. Twenty-one thousand two hundred. So, you know, they're recording.
Eleven area results, uh, that we've been notified about, they did find asbestos. I suppose since they had these in the floor dial, down, it's a bit, and then a small amount in the flashing, through the actual, in the product.
Should be the metal flashing.
It's more adhesive or something like that. So it, I guess, well, it's good as what you hope are within, or less than.
This is tile legit in the foyer, coming in.
Yeah, well, there's, there's tile, a good bit of it, some of it may be covered.
He said there was a little less market.
But it doesn't extend throughout the entire twelve thousand, it's very long enough.
I call that, the kitchen part back there is all concrete, usually concrete.
Without the windows. Probably the restaurant area and.
Believe that the asbestos product is in what they call the black mask, which is.
That's the, that he suggested.
We should have had the full report, uh, for the day or two.
Yeah. But it will be our responsibility then to hire a certified abating contractor to abate the disposal. And then dispose of the regulated site. We'll be responsible for that particular area of the site.
My question is, any of these guys have been on this, or have you been in that business at all? Do you know?
Most of them tell me that they could suggest some people.
Oh, I would think they got worked, I would more tied to my demolition job.
Yeah, he or I, I know, they, he also told me they could give us listen. I guess the company that they suggested treated the boiler room was called One Priority Environmental Services. And I looked that up, and showed definitely, they charged a little less than ten thousand dollars for what they did.
See probably a few, couple of bids were served for him, and then he'd also get time for him to go there. I guess I'm counting on the inspector to use this. I guess we could probably.
You send out price requests and those kind of things, good ones.
Those would be based on probably whatever the report says.
They'll come down here doing assessment by square footage. I think it took sixty-eight samples. Sixty behind the fifteen and a half that they said they would call charge.
They priced out seventy-two?
I think that's right.
Well, the gentleman looks like he signed on.
Yep.
I make most of it, so I.
That gentleman's here, so I'll have any questions.
And you ready? You ready?
I make most of it, so I. Demolition, every one of these is a strong guy.
One second.
Motion by Commissioner Bruton, said by Commissioner Bliley to accept the demolition bid submitted by abating demolition weapon. The amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. I believe that does include the, if you call it restoration of the site, level and all. Very well. On paper.
Wow.
I'm opposed to then demolish one, that's opposed.
Again.
But so did.
So I guess for the next.
If y'all have any questions, call me out.
Please call them.
Guess what?
Introduce yourself.
Rod and Mace, major demolition.
Rod.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
As far as the restoration, that's normally pretty standard. Anytime you have fears, which is the unknown, unless you have old engineered plans, you know, say and such. Any of that, we'll put a demo down below, and then all of that has to be recompacted. Obviously, the, that is really the only time factor for the demolition side of it. You know, landfills are still going to get you in, uh, you know, to dispose of, but it's more or less, if you have that site open, fears are gone, and you get a big rain, which you'd all be so lucky.
Yeah, that would be a blaze.
Yeah, it would be. That, that's when you would have an issue with trying to get it dried out enough to get it recompacted, because most time they put pushing sand or anything buildings, and we all know how that, their hassle with the rain.
Uh, obviously, we're going to wait till we get the abatement for the asbestos taken care of. What is your demolition schedule?
We're, we're only five to seven days out.
Five to seven days.
And that project should take like five to seven days.
Do you have, uh, already knowledgeable of abating companies that you?
One priority, and I kind of told you as well, they, they make great for us to work with. They work great with E R I. And a lot of that is a chain handing down the paperwork, because I have to follow ten day on my process with the state as well. E R I will start the process with the state with one priority, whoever they, whoever you decide to use. We just all have to be on the same table together with the state, and the state's the one who abated, and so forth and so on. One thing just so y'all know, just in case it does come up, I don't think it will on a building like this, it's normally the wood frame structures with the wood subfloor. But if for any reason the state was to come out and inspect the project during the project, if the abating company misses something, you know, they took extra amount of samples, but he has every right to show up and look at the site. And if he finds something that's suspicious, and he pulls a sample test on it, he can make a stop and have the asbestos abating company come in and remove it. And that's, that's just, uh, the way the state laws are written, it's controlling what they can see.
Sure, the wooden buildings probably have a harshing problem.
Yes, there's all kinds of stuff, subfloor, you know, lift, lay three or four layers over top of the floor.
Treating.
It's the exact same deal that was operating, it's thirty-seven, four.
Thirty-four, seven.
Thirty-four, yes. So it just came down about five.
Yeah, actually, you're changing up, we're going to put more equipment on, try to speed up the process.
Get on to the next job faster.
Yes, sir. Was it the bidding process that means it's over?
Yeah, more or less, because our numbers shape public opinion, I haven't.
That's right. When the, when the debate is to whether we can hire them without the bid process was compromised, we decided to compromise on that situation, and opened it for bid, they obviously had to put a competitive bid out there.
Right.
And, and it worked out well, so.
One of these companies said they're going to haul stuff from my unit.
Yes, sir. We haul our concrete from my unit.
Sure.
Yes, we hauled up the four on them, some concrete.
You got to do it back.
Yes, sir. And the same thing goes to.
Carrying line president.
I can go right see, but he's winter ride, hopefully.
Winter ride, I go. I'm hoping you can get winter ride a couple.
Right now, if you have the moisture in the ground, it makes it easier, you know, obviously.
Brought weeds in the way.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
So the next, before I mean, we can certify in the next couple of days. On the next commissioner's court, do you want me to have names from the E R I on?
Well, yeah, I would like.
That would be good.
I like his idea that the fact he said it, those two work together, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Process. You and I both know that's your work. Lose better.
Thank you. Would you mind, can I take copies of all?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Just take a plate.
Five or six, maybe.
Okay, we'll be in recess, Lord. Dale, eleven. Okay, call me in exact order. Time is exactly eleven. Paperwork. Thank you. I wish for it played on the down to item number fifteen. Consider report that's out, it'll go online and online back.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's all, I think it's everybody's intention, hopefully, when they come into offices, to try to make things more accessible and easier to get to for the public. We always hear plenty about not being able to find records, if they'd like to. In the past, we, we have been, uh, I don't know if subscribed or what, to iDocket. Is any of you familiar with iDocket? What that is, is an online service that people have to join that service, that wants to use it, so to buy it, as an annual fee. Such as lawyers, and they, they use it probably more than the public, because the public might not want to join something and just use it one at a time. And they would pay for services, copies to iDocket, and we were supposed to be receiving some sort of reimbursement to that effect. Since I've been in this department, we have not received, and I recall, and I passed the auditor back then, it's been speaking, but I don't recall ever receiving any funds back from iDocket. I think it's, at some point, the record shows we've received maybe three dollars at one time. Anyway, and I know the reason they've had those holes, a lot of the records over the past. And then whenever Net Data, Mr. Gore started working with county clerk, going trying to provide records to the public, then that kind of, I got real interested in pursuing that. And of course, Jeff and also our IT man, they can give you a whole, a whole lot more about how this thing works than what I can, but it is an available service that we can make available to the public. We can get, we can close out iDocket, and, and if he can get us started on the bid process immediately, to where the public will find their dockets online. And, uh, also they can buy their dockets online, and we will receive our dollars a page, as we're supposed to, we're doing now. Also, it will come with the credit card reader and service, which we have not, we've had that in the past, and we do not use that, because it hasn't been working properly, and we'd have to enter everything by hand on the computer in order to access a credit card, too time consuming, and it wasn't profitable, and we, we, that was there. Again, that would make it a lot more readily available for the public, even if they came to our office and wanted to purchase copies, they could still use, um, credit card. And it would save us time, and hopefully take away problems of taking checks. Right now, we just take cash and check. Normally, don't really have a problem with the check, but we have had some, and recently that we have to get changed. So if, if you've got some questions, or if Jeff wants to explain a little bit more about what I'm trying to do, that is one of my goals before I leave office, is to try to make things more readily available to the public, and make it a little easier. Everything that we've got scanned into Net Data system now is what they're going to have available. Everything that we continue to scan forward is automatically accessible, and we still are working slowly in reverse as well. And most, as they get entered, they all become available to the public as well online.
How far back do you?
Currently, well, currently, the criminal, the only, a criminal record only go back to about, uh, maybe nineteen ninety-five. Our civil records go back to early seventies, close around nineteen seventy. And so, we don't like much to get to eighteen fifty or something like that.
So what all documents, what all documents are available online? I think I would want to know.
All documents?
All of them?
Everything that we scan are available. Civil, tax, and family.
So if somebody from California wanted a certified copy, they really can't do it online, they'd probably call you and get a certified copy?
Certified copy would have to run from our office.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
But that could still be done, where now they can all want a certified copy, and say, how you want, you know, back there would pay, you would pay online, or pay credit card, and all, you'll have to nail up a check.
Right.
And it closed the process down.
Excuse me?
Yes.
You're saying you're going to make people's full names, addresses, social security numbers, all of those available online to anybody who wants to go in?
The records label, the redacting will be done. You can get them back there on that, how they redact certain information. Oh, we can't give them that kind of.
I can, I could Google your name right now and get your name.
Yeah, that's number.
I'll be, this is the way in the world, right?
But we can't provide that. You can buy it.
Right.
We can't.
Can you explain for a social security number?
Oh, yeah. You can't just put anything online anymore. The data's good.
Jeff, if you please, call us.
Good morning, partners. My name is Jeff Gore, G L O O R. We met data. Uh, to answer your question, sir, uh, there is, there is a, some identification, like, you can go in and, uh, you have to actually create a login. I just can't get on, pay a document, download it. Uh, we, we try to at least put a little buffer there, or a little obstacle, uh, to a person to download, or we at least want to know who's downloading.
So you're gathering data as you're giving that?
You are, yes, yes, yes.
That's simple, yes.
Yes, sir, it's on system. We, you know, we, we try to lessen the obstacles when people pay you for the, for the documentation. Because right now, if I want to go get a document, uh, maybe contest by a couple of bad checks received, I can get a money order or cash. This way, we can do it on, on credit card. So, and like I say, it better serve the public. If it is, uh, uh, this is a one-time charge, we don't charge you for what's on the system. Uh, for instance, if, if all of a sudden he gets a grant, and we scan the rest of those documents online, they are available. Just, just like they are on the county clerk's office right now, we did a couple of years ago. So, does that make sense? I think Eric can testify.
You do the redacting of?
The system does, yes.
The system redacts?
Yes, it can.
Because every, every child is included in a suit, the interest of the child, or the divorce, you've got all those children's birthdays.
That's almost due.
Three numbers.
We've got sealed documents, all sealed documents, or running.
These are only public records?
Yes.
There is, if it's, if it's secure right now in the system, it is secure online.
I think what Dan's talking about is like the standard divorce. It's got the parents' names, and it's got the children's names, and it's got the driver's license and social, and a standard divorce.
Well, usually, not. Maybe the birthday, a lot of the social. Maybe the birthday, a lot of the social is just down before the last word, and it's, they're redacting a lot of that. But any of that can be redacted, and we'd have to see how that could be done, except for certain things. Anything related to juvenile, anything that's been redacted in the past. Anything that's been sealed, they all remain sealed. They, juvenile is all, okay, but they can't pull up, see what's in the case.
I can option against.
Of course, correct, that's a sealed record, still not available online. And it's a good point, is what is public information now?
It's designed as public record.
Right, correct.
All they get, like, in divorce, is the names and parties and style of the case. Is that all they get? They'll get the petition for divorce, the separate orders, get or support custody and so forth. They'll get that. That's all that'll.
Should be available. You can get that now, too?
Well, it can be, but.
Yeah.
Unless it's been ordered sealed.
Joe Smith could walk up there right now and get the records. I mean, this is the way it is.
Yeah. You know what I'm saying?
What records have been sealed in that court?
Probably not exactly.
But what's public record? You know, it's got different.
Public record, that's all public records. Unless it's been sealed, I would guess. Or requests sealed, any address sealed, and public records.
So, we're going to go to the first office and get.
Anything that's not sealed, we'll do. But we go in there.
Sure, and their, 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 their social security numbers.
I'm not sure if public records are in there. But if they are, we would back a lot of them.
If they are.
I think of most divorces, it's just a made up record. I don't like the socials on it. I've never seen. Yes.
The divorce is.
Chase and Randy.
Years now, or seventy, sixty?
What you want to do is the record of the public, keep them, public, you put them online, they already supposedly would be online. iDocket, if that's not been working well, you want to move them over to work. They're available for that data. And that's probably nine thousand. Do we have any funds to vote for that?
Yes. That was the county, county records management preservation, there's thirty-four thousand dollars.
Chase, why do you say? How much, how much that look at?
Not that.
I'm sorry, how much it'll cost?
It's ten thousand, we all going to use our chase online. Same, same deal we do with that, with the county clerk's office.
Obviously.
Yes, it's, oh, that, is that scanned in online?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just like that?
But you're watching.
I see your data. Jeff, Jeff. You win the way.
They don't care about iDocket.
You don't want to know.
Don't want to know.
And Jamie did beat me up in the hallway, so I'll throw in a hundred and twenty-five dollar credit card receipt. If that's not included, it is now, okay.
There may be a. Yeah, really, come on. Give me rock.
But, is that what you had in the headlock, Jeff? You're ass.
Good job, Jamie.
I got it.
Yeah.
You're out there, you only put three, no charges.
Is that what it's at? I think you got redacted wrong, Judge. Well, Judge, be honest with me, we did that, I went up to, you know, I just don't throw this out, I mean, we visited with Ann upstairs, and one is what you need for now. I'll be honest, if you need another one.
We'll work it out. Do you, what's the charge for?
Credit card fee. Same, same thing you do in county clerk's office. If someone is paying online, they, for instance, I bought a dollar, I think there's a minimum dollar for the credit card fee. On my credit, on the credit card statement, Young County, one dollar, Chase Bank, one dollar.
Well, in the public, we have a sign thing in offices that says there is a convenience fee, so they have a choice not to use their card.
Right, it is their choice.
It is a convenience fee, because, you know, Chase wants their money, so, and, you know, it's not fair to take that funds out of Young County.
Right.
Because, you know, that'd make a lot of sense if we started doing that.
But every transaction, Net Data picks up a little bit of every transaction.
Yes, sir, that's, that's why we knock off a thousand dollars.
We're all in, we're making a lot of work. There's one, we're all three hundred.
Yes, yes, there is, there is no hidden fee on credit card to Young County if that's.
It's a.
I mean, very specific.
It's a.
Yes. And if they don't, they can bring cash or money.
Whether it's a three dollar charge or a three hundred dollar charge.
Yes.
Just that one time each transaction.
Yes. And, you know, a lot of times.
The same with the JPs or anybody else.
Anybody that uses a credit card in Young County does pay a convenience fee. But, you know, what it knocks down a lot of is people that live in outline areas, don't have to drive into, drive into town for a plan today. Yes, sir.
You're cut out there.
Interesting, and that would affect people who request a lot of copies. But for normal citizens, they might get two or three copies a lot, that would make a terrible. And what do you pay them now for yours?
We're just, it's a service, provided to those who want to subscribe to iDocket. We didn't tell them, let's see, they can get on it. They can come to us and want us to be on that, so we can allow that access to the public, and I don't think we're getting.
Their money's waiting.
We're not getting any of that.
Well, you're not. That's what I mean, that you're not getting.
They'll call periodically and be to be down for two to three, five hours at a time.
Are they supposed to be paying us something for that?
Yeah. We should be getting some revenue.
We need to put our auditors on that little contract to find out if they will submit?
Yeah, I can look at it. Does that suppose that quite a long time?
Yeah.
Will we all wait until the public?
Yeah, okay.
Will we do?
A year ago, I think at the time, I was about all the way in.
It was part of a organization, like a lawyer group would.
Do you think that's basically what that is?
It was a big deal for them.
But some, yes, and I don't get a lot of it, I don't know how it works, but I know there's some way lawyers are supposed to subscribe to that service, and y'all are supposed to get some residual. And that's, to my knowledge, Jeff. So.
If somebody wants to, wants to get a copy of something from this system, Net Data?
Yes.
Okay, what do they have to pay to Net Data for that?
They, well, what they pay is they pay a dollar per printed page, which is state mandate, to the district clerk's office, just like they do in the county clerk's office.
Okay.
And then they pay a lit, if they're going to buy it online, they pay a little extra to Chase Bank, you know, the, you know, Chase Bank's credit card service. And I don't know what it is, I mean, it's a, like a minimum, you know, this is like a four percent, you know, so, what is that nickel paid? Yeah, so, it's just a convenience for them not to have to come into town and do that. Or if they move to Wichita Falls, they don't have to come down here and do that.
Are you, is that, that data's not involved in, in that transaction to draw a fee from that transaction?
My extent is, I make sure it works. That's, that's the extent of it.
But then that does give a fee every transaction?
No, it's a credit.
From the credit card company. Yes, not, not the Young County, Young County's going to be drawn.
I know, not the Young County.
I overdo it, but I mean, not, not the Young County, from the Chase Bank.
The person.
Yeah, the, the two dollars that may be charged is a convenience fee. Yeah, and I couldn't tell you how much we get. But I'm not, I'm driving a Ford, not a Lexus, so it didn't make.
So, what you're doing, providing an ordinance of convenience fee from.
It may take, you know, some change.
All the way. You're crazy.
Printed action.
We use credit cards for, for, there was a potential tax, and we have a bank account that they charge their own, the person who's making the payment. There's a charge on their own credit card, includes what's going to go to us, which goes directly into the bank account. And plus a fee that they pay to the credit card company for doing that. That's, the credit card company collects, and that's what the credit card company collects for transferring the funds to our next account. As far as I know, they take it, that's all, that's all they're charged. It's what the credit card company charges. They use their, use the card, match the card, discover the card, or whatever it is.
That's what I'm saying, credit cards charges the recipient, the one that formed, I mean, the user.
Like most of them. They enter into this agreement. I'm reading most of them into this agreement, and that, I put, and take it out of the.
Uh, county records management preservation.
That's, that's.
Both, both courts put money into their, their preservation of records.
Second. Most of, we heard through it, second by Commissioner Bobby to enter into agreement, Net Data to purchase online records, or Net Data to purchase online records. For the district clerk.
Be paid out of.
And do be paid out of.
Records management.
Records management.
Preservation.
Preservation. Record management, representation. All in sight.
I.
Court, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
They don't talk about state of the office every time, but I would just make, make sure we're crystal clear on your account.
Nine thousand. That doesn't do that.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it. For the time, for listening, I think it would be a plus. I don't want to put a different price on it, but it also would be a plus for our public.
Got you. Okay.
Yeah.
You did ask for West, you mentioned Rogers, we're going to move item number. First team person. Backed out on the third team, or focused right. Like you got a plan, order.
Tell these two guys, appreciate the time and effort, some of these bids coming to Detroit, coming to Grand Texas today, present your proposal, and there's some pluses and minuses on both of them. I say more negatives on the Detroit line, but when you go there, those upgrades, your prices going to come up. Say you're going there to get that way, I know the Mac's probably higher with the M drive, but all of that, Mac M drive associated with the Mac motors and rear ends, they all mesh up together. I believe it's going to allow me to utilize my blowies, the tops and blowies that I've been hired to drive this equipment. And I think resale value should be there when I try to resell in a couple of years. It's, we build these trucks, these trucks today, just like we do our motor graders, we do it for resale value also. We got to link down the road. So, initial calls, just one thing, but we're trying to look further on down the road. And I believe my act with the M drive is the way to go. And I propose a promotion to buy two of them. And I believe First National, I mean, where First National and Whistler's going to finance those at two point two percent. I'm going to reject all bids on the used equipment, the trade-ins from companies. And I'm going to have to republie and refit the used equipment. I thought it's some people that's interning bids just for the equipment, I figured I'd just trade them in. But that equipment sells, I'll arrive and get more money, so I'll have to go out and republie stuff. All right. I've got a motion to reject all of the bids on the used equipment.
Second. Okay, your, your motion is to reject the bids for signing value. All in sight?
Yeah, I'm calling.
I had, I had to do that, but you are on.
Just to sell the other.
Used trucks, yeah, they're the opposite, they need to republie one more time. And see if one gets the bids up then.
Open and we'll all have.
And we'll have to open them. Time frame, I'm publishing the bid, not going to last for the, until the next.
I'm going to the last meeting in March.
Yeah, the last meeting in March, unless we hold respect. Just to the last meeting in March. Then the next motion is to sell the bid out of Rutgers. You got a number on this, Mr. Bill, back at the bottom right? Bottom right? Right, you got a, a number on your proposal?
Yeah, what, on the top right, it says your model make, stock number?
Yeah. It says five oh five horsepower M drive, twenty fifteen.
Okay. And the price is at the bottom, hold me down.
One thirteen nine twenty seven.
Bid number four.
That's number, um, ten.
You have number four?
Thirteen.
Four. One thirteen nine twenty seven.
I got one, I got mine number four. One oh one thirteen, number four.
Okay. One thirteen nine twenty seven.
Put some money down on that and finance about nine, nine and quarter thousand.
I will see. Bid amount is one thirteen nine twenty seven, eight. Was there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Mr. Wiley, to approve bid number four for the purchase of two five hundred five horsepower Mac trucks, said it cost one hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars each. Put some down money to the financial balance. First American. First American Bank. First American Whiskey. American. American whiskey. Got all that money in whiskey, national, American Max. American Max whiskey. All fighters, that motion?
After that, I'm going to oppose it, because I thought we opened the case when you get the cheapest.
After that, I'm gonna oppose it, because I thought we opened the asking, we get the cheapest bid, they can go a lot of ways, so I'm gonna oppose it.
My motion is to carry. Who was one, Mr. Phil opposing? Probably finance, yeah, three hundred. And we need to attack something else before moving to the topic.
You're gonna go ahead and do what we're talking about over there.
Yeah, we might as well, and go back to two lines.
Thank you.
Consider refinance options, vehicle quit. We had a conversation with First National Leasing, Stewart's Law, and American National Leasing, like a few of them. And then Wylie, five.
You just do a sealed bid on it?
Yeah, let's do a sealed, then we go back. We got two point two now, somebody come back with two point one nine seven five, I mean, it's.
I believe that.
Let's just ask them what their bottom line is, what their bottom number is.
Do one last time, seal bid, and then we ain't sold, now. In this been finally around here.
You make that a motion?
I'm buying it.
Okay, I'll second that.
For March?
Yes.
For March.
I second.
No action.
Okay. Give you a motion.
Okay, sir.
We're gonna table any action on this at this time, uh, to be placed on our, um, next meeting, it's gonna be tenth, the tenth?
Tenth.
Tenth. The tenth of March, uh, where it will, we will request those proposals to be sealed. We'll open at that time, and then consider the sealed proposals of the refinancing report. All in favor?
Yeah.
I'm gonna oppose it. Well, the simple fact is that we gave him two times, we gave Stewart one, Stewart came in cheap the first time, now we go back to the end do it, now we're gonna redo it again. I just don't think it's fair, so I'm just gonna.
Okay, that's four zero one with Mr. Phil opposing. The page. Four, four one zero.
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough. Say past third half, we're gonna go place maybe, and seal the proposals.
I just, that's, I just give it to him about three thirty, is that?
Okay. Thank you, sir. And Ellis. We're moving to the item number four, Southern County Department of Labor's meeting, February eighth of two thousand fourteen. The only thing that I know about that, we, uh, which may like they were all right with the exception of getting that, uh, budget amendment.
Who is it, Brian, who's the twenty seventh? That was in January twenty seventh.
That's when we approved it, but.
Yeah, I had it worked up to that day.
It's brought the amendment. In here that day, uh, since it happened, maybe.
To. So you wanted on that set of minutes?
Yeah. Missed out on the, uh. And that's, that's the budget amendment that we, we might. Three other additional corrections.
It's not much that matters, but the year on this is in Friday, twenty four. I don't know if you need to tag anything.
It hasn't lasted the first half of the year, though.
You're gonna have to tell me.
Sir?
You're gonna have to tell us.
My turn, Ted, wait.
Good. I'll second it. Proving that, won't say it. Please don't finish, um, as presented, with the additional, they haven't put that, uh, budget in. All in favor?
Aye.
Financial reports.
I'm not gonna go over the, you have to burn a few, the December and January balance books, if you have any questions, I can go over that. Uh, the collections for the taxes are about eighty seven eighty six percent on the, for the district. And this is for information only, January is busy time, for the fourth quarter calendar year for criminal justice fees and fines, we collected sixty seven thousand three hundred eighty seven dollars and twenty cents, and of that, the state received fifty thousand three hundred and seven dollars and thirty two cents. Private collections received four thousand three hundred nine eight oh seven, which GHS about nineteen fifty four fifty six, and Purdue, two thousand four hundred forty three fifty one, and then Omni Base, which is part of the JP and, uh, stopping people from hitting their driver's license, all that, they got two hundred fifty three. So the county out of sixty seven thousand three hundred eighty seven twenty, we received twelve thousand four hundred twenty nine dollars and eighty one cents. For all that work.
Wow.
Ooh.
Well, made it twenty nine dollars and eighty one.
That's not a very good percentage.
And since we have collected so much money out of, uh, in our treasury account, had so much in it, uh, Cheryl and I talked about it, and we moved, this is the first time we've been able to do this in quite a few years, we, we moved the two thousand thirteen ending balance from September into the money market account, so we moved nine hundred forty six thousand four hundred twenty six dollars and sixty six cents into the money market, because all we've been doing is taking money out of there to pay for it. So our money market account now has one million seven hundred fifty three dollars, twenty one, twenty one dollars and six cents.
Very good.
And our current balance in the treasury part now is two million eight seven thousand nine hundred and fifty three. So we're looking good on all departments, all money, rolling along. What about our insurance, it still looks okay?
Insurance looks good today, we had a great run on, uh, Friday, I just live from Friday to Friday.
Yeah, it didn't have much, once.
Thank you, thank you.
We still have seventy three thousand, so, we haven't moved the, into the month premiums in there yet, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll be paying the premiums after the first.
And also, the, uh, net service payment was made February, and that was six hundred ninety one thousand four hundred fifty dollars and seventy five cents.
And that's the balance of?
Three hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty.
That's pretty good. We have more than enough, like our second.
So overall, money flow is good?
We have a decent financial player, for the end.
Uh, yeah, we have a hard interest, principal.
The arts flowing. Make a little improvement.
Principal and interest, connection.
The most, Commissioner Wylie, second, Commissioner Phil, to approve financials, as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Period.
I'd just like to say, I'm glad our Winkos are finished, we love them, glad, glad that they're not working.
You're just glad the noise is coming.
Listen to the words.
Any budget amendments?
And speaking of financials, we also requested our twenty fourteen BP, the bank of money, and I know we're running for the ninety, ninety five thousand, seventy fifty, something like that.
We've got, uh, um, to make some.
Well, I, I guess that's eleven.
That's BP.
We've got BP and cashable.
No, um, that, uh, go up check with, uh, our pledge register on that, that's, that's a true bank.
Does that go through them?
Through them, and that comes through our.
Six year back, six year.
I don't feel some, I feel BP, you ever? Maybe where.
BP is ninety two thousand, that's three hundred fifty dollars, something like that.
Over ninety nine, I don't know, but she called it a man who she's working.
Ninety two thousand, I'm sorry.
I can look it up. The budget I mentioned, that I have, is one with such Willock, uh, had talked to me about, we were needing money moved into professional services, because, uh, NorTEX is no longer handling. Right, and we already paid sixteen hundred out there, which is negative, so, uh, with that, and then the forty five twenty five that will have to fail, it was, uh, six thousand one hundred fifty as well, which we had moved into professional services from various different lines.
That's all entered the budget.
It's all within that one? Yeah.
NorTEX, no action.
Excuse me?
Is NorTEX hurting?
No, um, it was something that's coming, it just like the tank, about six months earlier than expected, they were getting out of them. They're getting out of this, uh, emergency notification system, by the way, they had filed a, a number of licenses, licenses, like fifty one. That went down, eventually went down to thirteen, one for each county, and two, I think, considered was not all, or something like that. They've got out of the emergency notification, they're posting that license, and part of that's from reduction in grant funds and things they had up there. So our group, then some of them split off, went independent, some of them went to Code Red, Jack County, Archer County, Bader County, Montague County, Young County. All thought it would be best to try to stay in the group, and stay with the system that we had been utilizing, that's I N code. And they stay I N code, but it's, you know, the, the group names change, and NorTEX's emergency notification system, the cost tempers, emergency notification system. We have two licenses, licenses. One of those is transferred from NorTEX to us, it's, it's, one additional license back to, off of. There's minutes that go along with it, uh, when, uh, an emergency call is made from the emergency management office here, or our IP, uh, director too, um, they go through our reverse nine one one system, and those minutes are allocated to those calls, doesn't cost anything for the text, or the email message, but the total minutes cost, those minutes are purchased, they go into a pool, and if, uh, the group doesn't use the entire pool in the, in a, in their allocated timeframe, in the year, then additional minutes will then be stapled, provide new minutes on the pool. If anybody in the group has, uh, overused their allocated minutes or bought an inadequate proportion, according to the number of telephone lines that you have, I think our cost of minutes here is something like fifteen hundred dollars. If Young County had circumstances where they had to use that system enough to, uh, utilize all of the minutes in there, then they would dip into the group pool and use and draw minutes out of that pool. If the whole group ran out of minutes to use, then they would dip into the staple. Now, then you start that process all over again. Any minutes that are left in the group, they will then leave the staple. But that, um, now that you've been involved with the I N code system, the five of those kind of, again, the, Archer can, uh, Archer, Jack County uses it a lot, but that is where, you know, I don't use it there that much, he posts meetings, different events in the community, and all that, that kind of thing on there, I, I, that's then, put out some, um, three, four, five emergency notices. We tested it back by his call, um, for first time, and got about eighty five, eighty six percent connect rate, which is awesome. Much, much better than anybody else's system. So if it's working, I kind of know how to use it, there goes that, you don't have to learn something new. So we're, that's the provision for all the line item changes, to get enough money, what we're gonna do is push that, we're gonna, combine the invoices and push it to January of fifteen, for a one-time invoice, annual invoice, it'll be fifty one hundred and fourteen dollars.
So what we have now is four thousand five.
That's just kind of modification or mutation in the system and the group that, that is utilizing I N.
Ask the question, a minute.
We don't have to have action on it, because it's what you're down to. If it's within the lines of the sign, you don't have to have action on it?
Yeah, it needs, it needs action, uh, on it, it's showing from the, all the lines. On about the second. Or the line item. Move. For this, and that. Yeah, all, all those, for the line. Or entry, but, okay, all in favor? We will get invoices, it shouldn't be, uh, five, two acres, and, you know, it's coming.
And then I'll keep this in a budget box, this will be a budget.
Vouchers?
Yes. Not too bad today, total vouchers of, uh, seventy seven thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and eighty four cents. And of that, um, seventy two thousand nine ten forty eight exact channels.
So many vouchers.
All in favor of approving vouchers payable, as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Period, five, we go. Considering blowie bonds, due to Canadian, uh, that's an assistant county tax lawyer.
Yes, we're all leaving then.
All in favor of quick bond, period, five, oh. Okay, considering Young County, fire a petition request for refund of five dollars and two cents to T B D McDonald's for an incorrect settlement. Good, Mr. Wylie, all in favor of such refund?
Aye.
Period. Consider tax resale aid for one oh one East Ludworth and alling, a thousand dollar bid, this, we ran.
Like that resale, they can just fight.
They can change the same.
They do, by the. This is what?
Said Gosling, no handle, maybe.
It sure does. It's not by Judge Gosling. Well, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
About me making love with you, they, the system in there.
I saw Tommy, I saw Tommy in my office the other night and I forgot to tell you about that. I guess it's just that Judge Gosselin, I looks much alike.
Yeah. It's that eye.
Yeah. All in favor? About item number eleven, any fact that you'll have an invoice from Detective Subgates County for our annual dues, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars? Do we pay those tips? Motion for Commissioner Sykes, second, Commissioner Wiley, approve that membership fee due to pay. All in favor?
I agree.
Very. Okay, this item number twelve is the interloper agreement between Graham Hospital District, City of Graham, Young County that was previously approved, lifted for recording purposes. We've got the signed document back. I think with all appropriate security on it, this is just for a filing record.
When did effect February first?
Excuse me?
When did effect February first?
Yes, February first.
It leaves January thirty-first of twenty fifteen.
That's correct. We approve that on seven, for these. Okay. I don't know if there's any action, I'm going to take on that, it is new, because we have a dig. Item number, we've done thirteen, we've done fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Consider elevator upgrade, maintenance contract, size and proof, elevator, anybody here?
See, he was going to bring a price of that motor and stuff.
Were you to get that?
I didn't.
With the addition of that loader control box?
Yeah, the contact system. That's what he's supposed to come back to and put it all together and have one, one price.
He knew his, he knew his beer.
He knew, he had, I talked to him.
Well, we put this on.
Yeah, postpone action on that.
Action will have to, anytime he shows up again. We'll give him one more change.
Of course, yeah. Well, yeah.
We'll actually start benefiting if he shows up. We need to find out about that.
It'd be nice to get in that contact because it was going to save us quite a bit.
It did. I was. I agree.
Well, I thought we could negotiate that because he didn't show up here.
Okay.
Last meeting, we talked about that. In the family. The next day, I think, or whatever. Didn't really.
Oh, yeah. Scared of the mother.
We had to call him out, fortunately, wasn't anything but a wire that.
Come and look.
It had a rope. There was a wire that.
Up and down the alley.
As the elevator moves and it broke.
I think.
It just, it wouldn't, it triggered its function. It thought it was at the top all the time, so fire stepped in there, button, button stepped inside of it, motor took off running, pump worked, you could hear it running. He said it sure didn't seem like it took a lot of time to get it off and the road from the end moved.
Well, on this, it is, it's considered elevator upgrade, which is the doorstop thing, right? And maintenance contract.
Absolutely.
Right. I mean, that's all it's saying, so.
Well, it didn't table that.
It's right here.
Well, it's also, we're supposed to bring back the contact and put all of it together in one package.
Well, he's, he's got that solid state starter on this.
Yeah, it says right here, total contact, contract price, term of due is, well, it's four thousand four hundred.
Doorage is infrared sensor.
Yeah.
And then the solid state starter, is that control box for the runner?
I mean, it's there.
Got, valve's due twenty-two, thirty.
Thirty, twenty-fifty.
Yep. That changes our monthly service charge.
Okay, two sixty? My bad, I didn't see that.
That's all.
Well.
Talking, to change your motion?
Yeah. Let's go ahead and get that deal launched and get that behind us.
Go ahead, prove the upgrade.
Yeah.
And the contract. That's infrared light thing that activates the door.
Okay, so we need to get, we need to get him to get us a contract to sign and.
So we approve it?
Solid state starter.
You approve it?
Put it through. I have a motion, pretend to approve it.
That's about a hundred dollars for that starter? Was it what, thirty-seven hundred dollars on it?
Top of it.
Is that right?
Thank you. Two thousand. I'm, I'm, Jimmy, you had that motion.
You made, I already made the motion.
To accept this contract?
Accept.
I'll second that. Who approves upgrade maintenance contract, size and proof, elevator service. All in favor?
I agree. I'd like to need to look at those bars running down there too and go check in.
Think that'd be a service. I didn't get that in the packet before, recalculated that application. A lot to do with that.
What's that?
We, we see application, that application, all.
Yeah.
What he sent us?
I was saying, we'd say, was it? That's, that's the grand totals.
Yesterday or.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, we coordinated our calculations that bounced match, so we've got all the application ready to go. Whenever they open it up.
Sure, sure, a lot of counties are not in play.
It's good.
Absolutely. We'll take everything we can get.
Okay, they'll not be in the action. Let somebody discuss that. See first.
We're there.
Okay, let's go by item number. Those that, item number one, consider replacing telephone system in the sheriff's office. If she does say, you know, had taken these, David out. Eric, could you talk a little bit more about the circumstance involved there?
Yes, sir. And the sheriff's office has issues with phone system that according to David Pride appears to be the phone system in the process of failing. So he's provided a quote to do a replacement of, we're out of warranty with national tele systems that we had previously. As we learned, we had to replace our drive for the voicemail that subsequently had failed. We had to replace that at quite a great cost. The remaining issue we're trying to avoid here is the phone system collapsing and nine-one-one being offline, which is something that, that can't happen. So David took a look at it and this is his recommendation. We have spoke with Marcia as well. He's supposed to be double checking to make sure that it's going to run properly with the recorder that we have in place, because if it doesn't, then there's, there's no point in us doing this. So he's, he's double checking on that to make sure. He assures us that it's supposed to work with it, but I'm going to be sure that it works with supposedly.
He knows the nine-one-one system and that, but David, I mean, he should, he says it is, it will be so.
What's your assessment of the phone system out there?
The current phone system honestly isn't that old. About seven, eight years. Right, and it's, I mean, it's as new as the jail as itself. The, the biggest issue right now that, that the system is posing is that displays on the phones don't read correctly. You can't necessarily see everything on the displays. There's some static in some lines, particularly their mine, but to me, that's, that's not a, a huge issue for me, being the most, the couple of phone calls that I receive come in through my cell phone. I'm always hesitant when it comes to spending this amount of money.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Would it be better if we, or would it be feasible if we went out for bids on something like this, with it being so large?
Well, the conservative in me says yes.
That's what I'm saying.
But that's what was done before the contract. They went with the cheapest.
That's true.
Phone system they had in.
That's, that's the hardest part for me because.
Like you said, like if it's like bidding on a truck, we put specs on it.
Right. And you're, and you're right. And, and I, I think that we deserve, we, you know, owe that to the constituents in the county to, to get the best price possible. However, with that being said, David is, is here and he's local and in most cases when we have issues here inside the courthouse, he's here either within the day or quickly thereafter. So that, that's a big bonus with going with AL Telephone.
I mean, that's something we can consider if we did the bids.
Right. The biggest problem we have right now with the contractor that we have with cell, with the telephones out there at the sheriff's office is they're difficult to get a hold of, they.
Right.
And we pay for every penny. We have to pay for them to travel every time and.
That's, that's the thing that we've had up there since we've had the jail. Anything, anything that's happened with our, our, our video system, anything that's happened with our recording system, whatever it is, he calls the handlers. Most of the people come out of San Antonio.
True.
All right, we pay from time they leave to time they get back. And if we can get it in-house, and I look at it like this, a lot of times you, if, if you save a whole bunch up front, but you pay for it on the backside, it's better just to get something in a good price but up front and not have to pay that extra buck.
You're right, a little bid is not always best value and we need to make certain that we're spending the money that we spend wisely.
Yes.
Not by the cheapest thing on the shelf.
We put specs on it. We want this, this, and this. We want this kind of service, this kind of service.
AL comes in cheap.
And the local government, but I mean, you're the best.
Local government code allows us to purchase things under fifty thousand dollars because they allow us to consider what it is that we're buying when we buy it.
Well, the other other part that we've got to get to share is the situation here is, is if it goes down again. And, and let's say if it goes down in midday, that's no big deal.
Right.
Or if it goes down in the middle of the city crisis that we have going on, and we can't do nothing about it.
Right. The emergency definitely plays into it.
I mean, there might be a place in Jackson, Georgia, Alling, Breakers? I, I have no clue.
Right.
Like, we'd be here within thirty minutes too.
Right.
I don't know. I, I don't know.
We could, we saw earlier that you can take bids and push your local person's numbers down, but is there an advantage to, to pushing David's number down to us? If, if, what we're really buying when we buy local, we're buying service on that system. That, that nine-one-one system is the, the key thing. We need somebody Johnny on the spot to take care of it.
Plus we're keeping our money locally too.
That's the other thing. I, I have a very working relationship with David. We communicate quite easily. We haven't had very many issues here that can't be solved. In fact, we haven't had any issues we haven't been able to solve, but.
The phone system, I'm likely, might have worked to add solving system.
Very similar to what we currently have here in the courthouse, which, to me, they're two different systems. They function separately, so they don't necessarily have to be the same, but in the grand scheme of things, it's probably easier service wise if we had two.
Is this not just a problem, you need to buy new phones for the system?
No, we, we, actually, we spent some time back in the, back in the telephone room where the, all the lines come in to double check to make sure that it wasn't just lines running from the, the D mark to the building, the switches into the recorder. We've double checked all of this to make sure that it is the phone system and unfortunately it is.
So it's on our side of the D mark?
Right. It, it's, it has nothing to do with, you know, AT&T or anything on the other lines. They, you know, their, their service stops as soon as it hits the building.
Does a service contractor, David, come with us?
I believe so. He actually, when he does any sort of maintenance here, anytime that I call him, I don't believe that we actually received any sort of invoice from him for, for general courthouse issues. I know he moved, forwarded Lauren's line from her office to the commissioner's office temporarily to allow her a work space while early voting's going on. He's been here a number of other times.
Sometimes he hasn't charged, sometimes he might charge a hundred dollars or something if it's something he's having to.
Right, if you have to spend it in jail, we got, we got forty phones.
Forty phones. That's what he's quoting. We, we haven't gone through and, you know, counted each phone. The phone system in the sheriff's office is quite a bit trickier than the one here because there's phones in certain places that you didn't think they were phones. You know, and not suggesting that there's one in the sheriff's bathroom or anything, but there's some really odd places that phone telephones are, so.
Just have, just have you time to do it all.
No, this won't, this is not in conjunction with the, you know, the, the phones that they use there, you know, their one call for. This is going to be our internal system that we currently have. From everything that David and I have worked together gathered on, this is simply the deterioration of the phone system due to the lightning strike. And it's hard to prove that, so we can't, you know, me and Cheryl talked about this as far as, you know, insurance type issue, but since we've changed insurance carriers and we've, you know, outlasted the, the timeframe, we've.
It's been two years and I'm just on here, we don't have solid physical proof that.
I know, it's certainly strange that a solid state telephone system wouldn't last longer.
You're right.
Because I've got one in my office less than twenty years.
Right. Well, the year we had the chief of lightning strike is, was a rough year and we're still unfortunately uncovering things that are, have been affected.
We've replaced telephones occasionally.
Right.
I believe this system we have here in the courthouse may be the third system that we've had since I've been on. I believe we've replaced it two times.
Just in the last fourteen years, I think, this is really antique.
We had a contingency.
There is enough in there, I don't know exactly because I also was going to think our contingency, something the other day we talked about, Boulder project. But like I said, when's that going to happen? But there's enough to cover both of these issues.
I, I agree, I agree that having somebody local is, is great and good, but I still think that we should look, at least look, I think we owe it to the taxpayer. And even if he comes down a thousand dollars, it saves the taxpayer a thousand bucks, I'm just.
My only deal on going out for bids is our timeframe. I'm scared that's, I'm scared.
We start going out for bids for all this, we're going to be tired.
Well, and I'm scared that system's going to, I mean, he came and talked to us a week ago Friday and we were.
If we suspect we're being priced out, you know, we need to check the, check the bids, but it's hot. Do we need forty telephones?
I mean, that number, that number will obvious, obviously change according to how many phones.
It'll make that determination.
As we, I, I'm assuming, I informed the sheriff and chief deputy as well and they're not here today, but we'll walk around to, to gather how many phones are necessary. And if we're, hard in the same phone system that we have here in the courthouse, we have a few phones that we have in reserve in the event that, you know, one were to fall or break that we can replace. So this number is, will change according. So this number is, will change according to how many we actually need. And I'll make it a goal this week to determine how many of those phones, so he can judge this to be far more accurate than, than just, you know, blanket forty.
I think you can have that. But it's still inside certain plans of a bid. Right. Those are right. I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Hood. Might, I'll give that out, out the other day at least to search a, a price option there, but then you also have to consider, is that phone system gonna go out this afternoon or will it probably last a couple of years or not?
Right.
Well, you know, the other thing too is, it's another thing is when you gotta get out, it's, it's come sit there and keep that phone system up for you and keep it manned in while it's down. And then we go out to bid and get somebody else's. This is, you know, we got somebody that's loyal to us, that, that do the good job, we know, he knows the system. And if he puts it in, he knows. That's the only thing, you know, this month. By the way, he's, he's, he's familiar with both sides of the, of the street.
I'd just like to keep the number of telephones down to necessary and not exceed it.
Absolutely. And, uh, what this idea allows us to do, uh, changing the phone system would allow us to bring in the same type of phone service that we have through Webfire, which has reduced our phone bill quite substantially with AT&amp;T. Um, and I would, I would hope that we would bring that up to consideration because our phone bill for long distance with AT&amp;T out of the sheriff's office is quite substantial. And I believe that that is our biggest charge out of the jail when it comes to telephones.
Are these IP phones?
These are, uh, they're, they're both digital and analog, they can roll either way, but the way that we, the way that David sets it up, like it's set up here, it runs voice over IP. So it's, it runs on the digital side. We have a T one line that comes in that is operated by Webfire who does all of our phone system, they do our billing, and, and we've had quite a bit of success with them. You know, occasionally there's, when the, when the lines are cut, then, you know, we lose phone service, but that's, that's gonna be that way no matter which way you go now if everything's still digital.
So there's a difference in the charge or how the billing would be handled?
Right.
Do that with the system this time?
No, not, not to my knowledge, with the way that everything is set up out there, I believe everything out there is, is an analog system.
Is that an analog system out there?
So in, in the event that we were to approve to, or y'all were to approve to replace the phone system, I would also look to change the phone service so we can reduce our costs. So technically, if we're looking at spending, you know, roughly twenty-one thousand dollars or more, we could recoup some of that.
I've seen with the cost. With, with service charge, right?
Yeah. That needs a paper check real quick.
But that, the judge said that maybe being able to put it in next year's budget might be. Here's your, like, an up consideration here is, David is also been working down in South Texas and he's, at the period that's out, he's gone for an extended period, like a week or two, is that right, Cheryl? Installing systems in other facilities.
Right.
On the, you know, way down South Texas. And I, do you see our only couple of them around here?
Locally, yes, sir.
But he isn't like, could have gone away.
Uh, he has two, two workers that have a tendency to, to be with him, especially on installs. I know when we did ours, he had Buddy as well as, I believe it was his brother.
Buddy's a little south of here to go.
Yeah, Buddy Jones.
Yeah.
So what are you gonna do when he, if the phones went down these days?
I don't think so.
We have to wait for somebody to come from out of town?
That, that's possible. I mean, if you look at bringing in, same, bringing the same people from national tele systems back in to, reading the phone systems, they're, they're gonna be most likely the next day or day after, depending on their schedule. So we're, more or less we'd be in the same boat when it comes to availability in the event that he's out of town, but.
And notice I can tell when it was gonna go down. You could tell it when it went lottery tomorrow and I would be waiting. So we know what the cost of this system was when it was installed?
I don't. I could look up in my old, all, all bills I've paid, um, and see it's, it was pretty high.
It was more like that right there.
You think so?
Yeah, I do think so, but I could, I can.
You're about technology.
Yeah, okay.
But this is a panasonic system?
Yes, sir.
Those wheels, if I remember, out there would've been proved, proved.
Yeah, it was all bid out through our contractors, um, so, but I think that somewhere I would have what the cost was. I remember it was a month for their installation, but then come back.
Right.
That was more than the system.
The, the contractor comes out of Dallas and on the north side of Dallas, if I'm ever serving, serving you correctly, they'll, they charge a pretty penny for any sort of traffic. And then, you know, depending on what the work they're doing, they also charge for a hotel and meals as well, so.
And the other, uh, I guess there's an optional thing here. Could be, uh, one is to buy the equipment, possible to hear by having it in place. I think he thought that it'd take a year or two for him to get in.
Yeah, he said he could call up, he could have nine one one, he would be down for like thirty minutes or so, he could get it there, get it done, but the whole, everybody else, you know, and that's what he was kinda waiting to schedule his South Texas done to see what we did so he can, he can have it ordered and get the next day to start getting it in.
Uh, uh, yes, uh, understanding. And I believe that he can then solve that in the whole system now, okay?
Well, that's what I understand also.
It's all water.
Right, it's, I mean, it's, it's not like he started fresh, he's. We're just aiming to roll everything from the head unit that's currently there, mount the new one, and then start rolling.
The phone system.
Not, not to the little bit, but he means, but it's, it's gonna be a difficult job, but it shouldn't take an extended.
One start at a time.
Right.
What's favorite court?
The baby.
I don't know how it's, I bet you're gonna get it wrong, get it out. You have to say it's a fair.
When was the last time the phone system went down?
The voicemail went down, I believe it was in October.
Well, it was out there about two weeks ago.
Was it after a couple of weeks ago? Was it just the?
I don't know when out there was like.
Oh, uh.
Their voicemail's not working out, that's one of the main things.
No, it's, it is working. We've, we brought in, we, unfortunately, we had to call national tele systems and, and the judge signed the, the invoice, remember the invoice that I brought to you for that? To get that corrected. The issues that we've been having is from the telephone to the recorder and some lines not picking up, and so that's why we've had David come through, and, but those are relatively separate.
So it's gone from a reliable system to a kind of a hidden miss system?
Liding unfortunately will do that.
Liding will do that.
So, uh, it's, it's not truly dependable. You know, in the event that it was to go down nine one one automatically rolls to the next closest station, which would technically be Alney, for whatever time it takes us to get it back up, but, you know, like, like Mr. Robins said, it's, it's difficult to judge that and to have that down is.
Mr. Roberts, you're quite on this, what do you think?
Well, when it comes to forty phones, you know, that number could go down to thirty and there'd be some saving right there.
I honestly think it's probably half. I think it's a half. I mentioned the convenience versus the necessity.
We can just push that, that number right there. Of services worth a lot.
Yeah, that's a, I, I agree local service a lot, but I still think we owe it to our. I just like the number you didn't actually go out and basically count the telephone.
No, sir, he asked me and I said, we were in the ballpark range of between thirty and into the forties.
You estimated the high side.
He did. And then that, in, in all fairness, I would probably rather have a number that's higher that can be produced than.
Right.
Coming back with bill.
Won't you approve a high number and target it back? Won't you go out and let, and pick one?
I would absolutely. Because I'm not coming up, I'm coming up with in the ballpark of twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I, I figured.
But we can't convert our service to digital service.
As, as long as we move to a, a dual analog to digital system, absolutely.
I mean, just an headache in the, the book area, there's three phones.
Right.
I don't even need to use one.
Well, you never know with that, unfortunately, because if you have three copies, or if you have two FPs and a cop.
You still don't have that many phones. Trust me, I've looked them in, many, and I never really had a phone. That's the problem. Maybe two phones, one to them, I can call.
I'll definitely set up time with, you know, the sheriff or BJ, whichever one's going to be available to, to watch for, to see what they would prefer, and, uh, possibly include Mr. Cobb as well to, uh.
And I'm thinking, actually, that's carriers back there in the back of the jail, do they have phones? Nobody said that, you don't understand, like when you first come in.
Right. I think that was, I think that was designed in the events we were gonna expand.
I would still want to see this be shown under the budget. Because we keep taking things out of contingencies, we don't get a real picture of what those departments are actually costing the county to operate.
What I usually do is I'm paying out whatever office.
Transferring a lot?
I wanna pay, yeah, if I go to looking for, where am I gonna look for?
I don't know where that money is.
Yes, sir.
We certainly need to continue to do that, but we can't, can't have departments entering into a budget year knowing that they might need more money in the long run, or they come back from this court and get it every time they come and ask.
I don't know.
You know, cause I don't know that we've turned down anything.
I don't know if they did it.
We got plenty of stuff like this, it's unforeseen.
Yeah, and you have to do, I mean.
This is a have to.
Yeah.
This is a have to.
So it's good having, I'll actually, it's a good to do it unless it's not there, it's practice.
Right.
You know where it's at.
There.
A problem. I mean, that's prevention, it wasn't life though.
I know, it's nice to have the money there to pay for it, but if we didn't have the money to pay for it, what would we do to do it?
Exactly.
No, yes, sir, you wrote the home.
And I, there's a contingency built in there. And, and I know, once again, everybody don't wanna do the bid thing, but, and, and my opinion, and, and I think, when, when we consider this, just because somebody may have X amount of dollars, and this one may be an X amount of dollar higher or more, then we might consider that then. Well, you know, their convenience, their, they are here, but I still think we owe it to the taxpayer to do that. I know everybody hates to do the bids, but I think it is what it is, we gotta do what we gotta do. And they may be the last. It'd be a few, um, result in a little better price.
Right.
But they don't always just get the best bidder. And that's what I'm saying, we'll consider that, we're just, we're gonna be smart and consider that too.
Costs a hundred dollars to bid.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily the best bidder.
Right.
Whatever.
But it will close on a better price, lower price, not necessarily the best.
Who's putting it on the speaker up there?
Excuse me? I think it's wind blowing in one of those mics.
Maybe so up there. It's loud up here.
It's a wind blower.
That's how it is.
It's a belch, it's always a.
It's like a dude got.
Well, I will, I'll give David as well as, you'll walk around to double count the phones.
Yeah, I think you need to do a telephone inventory.
Absolutely.
I understand the need for the urgency, but I really don't need that.
Absolutely. I'm hesitant, like I said, when it comes to spending this amount of money.
You know, I, I asked my wife for seventy inch TV though, she told me I had one. That's all it was too then. I mean, it's just, it's been a lovely.
Right.
So we might have a motion to. No action.
You're wondering.
Just wide open? You're wide open for suggestion? Well, I'm making a motion to go out for bids. I'll just make it. I'm not talking to him off, I know it's like, for receipt pricing.
Okay. Not sealed weeds.
But I still think we need to, what'd you say?
Not sealed weeds.
Most of the blowers. Well, we go through the single bill.
We hand out most of the end of the month.
You know, it's, um.
I think you're right, we've got to write down under fifty thousand dollars. We could ask for prices.
And we can ask for pricing.
You're not going in the bidding.
Yeah.
I think we've had that discussion ever so.
So have people like sent in their prices or?
Shop it.
All of them.
Or the IT.
I think, I think man, contact the phone business. And I can definitely. Give them these specifications that David has given us and ask them what they're charging for.
I've looked at some in the past and I've looked at some, some other than more expensive ones, and I've had a couple of presentations from a few different companies, but we were looking closer into the lines of, you know, forty-two thousand upward to sixty, but I will most definitely reach out and see what else is available.
Does Alney know? Um, right, right. So you got Breck. And I know. Right. And I know Breck, he's got two. I've sure been a wealthy guy, I mean, you know, you're looking at people that's thirty minutes away.
Right.
In case there is something wrong. Could you find pricing?
I would do that.
I guess I'd like, has some of these pieces with cost.
We know Martin.
I'm not gonna. But I'll do that. Together pricing, I'm gonna be able to. With, with, with Perry. Mr. Blue, that's a motion. That's that too.
Yeah.
Look at it.
Sure.
I'll second the motion too. Allow our IT to receive pricing on telephone system for a sheriff's department.
Yeah.
They said. March tenth, April fourth. And that may go by. All, all of now, if that's, uh. Well, I guess if you say you've got a fellow that did work for him, covered for him, it sounds.
I don't know if they, they go with it sometimes if it's big project.
I don't, right. That's a gamble, but who, I don't, the way I took it, I'm not sure, of course, you come there without those things, but I don't think, I believe the telephone system is on the verge of collapse. Make it out of, I don't know, maybe all those things, maybe.
Never know.
Go back to that. Motion second. For our IT director to receive pricing in the fourth back and forth, all in favor? Okay, five over, believe, for us. Can you get through out of number twenty-one?
I can, I can get so quickly. It's, it's as likely as why it's possible. Uh, if you look on the back page of this proposal from High Tech, this is sticking with the same company that we've currently been using for the past forty years. Uh, we are upgrading all of our machines and the stipulation I gave them was we were, we wanted to cut cost at any cost, with keeping the same amount of machines, whether it meant keep the old ones or upgrade new ones to, to offset the balance of what they, sorry, go ahead.
No one question right here on this number one, is that replace twelve units or two D ones? Is that replacing twelve units that we have?
No, it, well, technically, yes, it's replacing, it's replacing all twelve units and with the addition of two more, the wording.
Two additional units.
Oh, yes, sir. They're replacing all twelve while adding two new ones.
Okay.
Uh, the two new ones will be replacing the Hudson copier that is in the clerk's office with one of similar stature that is, from my understanding, when we looked at the cost, it was about a hundred and twenty dollars a month, and we were reducing that down to eighty-eight dollars a month.
Been leasing that from Hudson instead of the other weakness. Been leasing that from Hudson instead of the other because it was there.
And it's been there for.
Total reduction of eighty dollars and six cents?
Uh, technically, it's reduction of thirty-two dollars a month. So leaving it at eighty-eight dollars a month versus the one-twenty. That's not, that's not on there, I'm just giving you numbers that I have here. Forty-eight, forty-two, eighty-eight. It's, it is, but it's deceiving because the way that that is set up, that is the, that is how much they're saving us versus our contract as it stands right now with the addition of adding two machines. So that savings is correct and true. But if we, the additional machine that we're adding Hudson, replacing the Hudson is for bill probation. They wanted to get on with, with the county, with the contract to get themselves the new copier scanner. So that is on there as well. If you actually.
Thirty-eight, forty-two, eighty-eight does translate to eighty dollars and six cents.
Oh, excuse me. Well, the way, the original proposal they sent us without adding those two machines allows for us to be saving eleven thousand fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents over four years. So the, uh, the flow through, there'll be a flow through for the bill probation.
And they reimburse, they pay that.
Right, right.
And we have a check.
Exactly.
And then as it stands right now, by reducing the Hudson copier, replacing it with.
Payed out there, just like juvenile.
It goes from a hundred and twenty dollars to eighty-eight, over four years, it's fifteen hundred thirty-six dollars. So either way you look at it, we're still cutting costs quite greatly.
And aren't they dropping the copy charge?
Yes, ma'am. They are reducing the copy cost from seven cents to six cents for colored copies. Uh, we, we only, we have two color copiers and they, uh, they're used frequently. So we try to curtail that as much as possible due to the costs involved with them.
Kind of color stoppage?
Not that many. We have one here for anybody that needs any colored copies, uh, that is for us that we pay for. And aren't there two over the jail, one in dispatch and one in the jail?
The one in the jail will be replaced with black and white only, they don't need.
Do they not need color copies for their?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, we talked about that. Yeah, it's, it will be color, but it's, it's produced in function. Um, it's not the big kind of common note that like we have here. It'll be a smaller function, almost like the one we're gonna put in the county clerk's office. Also with it will be putting account codes on there to offer a little bit of accountability and help on the auditing side. That way if you were going to make copies, it keeps any Joe Lo from walking into our copier and punching, you know, they wanted sixty color copies. It keeps lawyers from coming through and using it and sticking us with bill more or less. It's been done, meaning how it's for. So we're, we're looking to curtail some of that to cut some costs. And it's a free feature that we can put on there, so.
Okay.
To be honest, I see this as an add-on of plus. Either way, we're getting brand new machines for a lease of four years, saving on average of about nine thousand dollars.
For the four years?
For the four years.
I'll move that we enter to the contract. High tech office systems. Is there a second? I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? Did I offer you anything?
No, I think we've had a good service with High Tech as far as I know.
This is basically renewing and regen with, and that's where they're down, where they're getting my ideas.
We don't go after more bids.
Y'all can, y'all take.
We, I've, I've spoke with other vendors, uh, they, they do not come recommended. By other places, other companies here in town, they have received pretty negative marks. Uh, Rico, uh, we had a rep come through and I had a number of businesses here in town tell me that they had terrible luck with Rico, that they hadn't been able to get any sort of service when they needed it. So I would, I would just, in my opinion, I would stick with the company that has, has done quite well for us.
We used to have Hudson before we went to High Tech and we had many problems with the machines. I had problems with their billing was so messed up and, uh.
To the digital copies, copiers, copy machines, is that what we have now?
Yes, sir.
Well, not really, cause really we had one in the clerk's office replacement, just not to High Tech. And then the one in dump probation, they'll write the check to High Tech themselves and we'll just send it with them.
Okay.
We'll turn it back on that.
So, yeah, we're just kinda moving everything to.
Yeah.
Okay. And seriously, not gonna purchase any papers, can we?
Should.
Charges for copies, once they notice plus.
Copy, the colored copies, I mean, I don't think people realize how high because I had a bill at dispatch and I'm sure they're making those booklets, but six hundred dollars worth of colored copies out there. And, you know, they say the thing is, I'm sorry, I.
Why talk to them about that anyway, about the books for the jail forces? And most departments have had beautiful like that.
PDA calls, well, too, but that's what I'm saying.
That'd be a great way.
And, and actually, Budar was on board with that.
We, we, we discussed that on the training board with Matt Swell. As to stop making all of those additional copies, because when it comes down to it, we're running to the red in the training program, making all the copies. So we've got additional copy, that way if they want to bring their own paper copy, they have have it at their leisure, turn it off themselves.
We'll have a moment to second, I have a little question.
Question, big ask.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here. Farm pain. I said we put it back on.
Kinda with you on that one. I was gonna say, I'll second that.
Well, it's dry windy.
Fifty mile an hour winds in this quarter into March.
Yeah.
Once again, it's just an official county caution saying, please don't burn inside.
So I said I'm around.
And most are pretty around us.
Riley, you can play pardon. Is there a second?
Say it.
Fire?
Aye.
They get that, maybe. Make mostly yard.
I'm not going to go from that for more. I do.
I just need to.
But I'll visit. I'll go on the next one.
Open for seeing bids.
Obviously, I'm.